Be there to my daughters or somewhere. And you will see one vehicle traveling east on Avenue Bell. And as soon as they clear the intersection, are on 12th, traveling south, just misses them. Seen it numerous times. I've seen kids on bicycles traveling down Avenue Bell, heading home from Davie Dean Norman. Somebody running late, traveling south on 12th, going to pick up their child from one of the schools. The kids have actually had to stop their bicycles and they actually go through the intersections and don't stop. I'm fully aware of the standards. I've dealt with it before. And I did write letters of recommendations and send emails to the gentleman. I felt that coming on 12th Street and K of having a yield sign and a stop sign on 12th and L. And one of the reasons I did was visibility. I felt by Mr. Doty's house there and the Catholic church on Avenue Bell, there was more of a field of view for oncoming traffic than there was on a southbound vehicle traveling up on Avenue Bell. Because Mr. Bilbao's, the Bilbao residence has a fence, there are vehicles parked on both sides. I felt because of that field of view, I'd rather see a stop sign at that intersection. It's, you know, these guys have some great recommendations, something really needs to be done because we have... That street is centralized between two schools. And we have a lot of traffic from either school utilizing those roads now. When I grew up there, we did. So those are some of the concerns that I would like to share with you.
Alright, thank Bill. Okay, so the next one that we can look at is the Avenue K and 12th Street. Again, the numbers were low. We only had 585 vehicles travel through that intersection. The only thing that I don't like about that intersection, Bill was making a comment there as you come by the Doty's house and we got the Catholic church on the west side there. As you come off that hill, that's a huge blind spot. I don't know if you guys have had the opportunity to go down there. So my recommendation was to put a stop sign or yield sign there just because of that. I drove that intersection multiple times, just trying to see the pattern and check things out. But as you are heading southbound, that's a bad intersection. It really is. And it surprises me. And listen to Bill, I can see some of his concerns. But that surprised me how blind the intersection was. So I would recommend putting a traffic control device there.
Stop, we said stop in your...
Yeah.
They never...
I'd actually like to see a stop sign on the...
I mean, I recommend it. Just because of lack of traffic. When he's talking traffic, he's talking 500 traffic every week. We're not talking a day, we're talking a week. And so all of us concerns and I understand, and I don't want to ever be felt as heartless or whatever. But all the situations you're coming to when you say, hey, parents are late getting their kids to school. It's a traffic problem that that person's doing. A sign doesn't control somebody who's late. And so we want to put out the right number of signs, the correct signs, the amount of traffic that's there that gives them guidance. And if they choose to speed or break, well, that's their decision. It's not our decision to... A stop sign is meant to control speed.
I did put in there a stop sign after I reviewed BJ's email. He requested a yield sign. So again, we'll leave it up to the council, but if they're asking something with that intersection.
You says here that the... I think that this could be, especially with the rapid increase in traffic we have right now. Getting stain off of all of them. I think we have a safety risk for lots. Do we really want to consider public hearing on this?
That is how the code is set up. A public hearing has to be held before any signs can be installed. That is part of the process.
I take care of us.
I just want to say thank you for your diligence and watching out what's going on with the schools. And thank you all for the study. It was ironic because I actually had some students come up to me today and say, the traffic is bad. Well, they're walking, all the areas you're talking about, they're walking, crossing with lights. And I was really proud of them because they said, who can you talk to about this? Because we don't feel safe always riding and walking to school because the traffic is just so bad. So even the kids aren't aware.
And then the last one on the traffic study was the Park Avenue and 12th Street. And that's kind of a three-way intersection. Again, the number of vehicles was down under 27, so that actually kind of surprised me. But I think it's really from the park use. I think people that use the park actually head up that little street there on Park and have that intersection at 12. I would recommend a yield sign there just because of the volume of the traffic that you're entering into a uncontrolled three-way, which is really unusual. But yeah.
Well, the yield sign would be on the...
On Park Avenue.
On Park Avenue.
Are there any further questions of the sheriff?
No, I'd like to ask if, for that Avenue L and 12th Street, when school's more in session, can we go back and do, re-study that right there? Right there. Try to see whether we're talking about the going back over to school. So leave, go back and re-put your machine on there after school's in session for a little while. Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Is there a, I guess, a motion that would rest that instruction?
You can't make a motion to stop a yield sign or go to the...
Well, direction of public hearing is what we...
Yeah, okay. With the exception of that 12th and Avenue L part. Well, we want to do a lot of advice. So we'll study that later another time. But thank you.
Thanks a lot, Sheriff.
The motion is for a public hearing on all the items except for 12th and L. Do I have a motion or a second for that?
I'll stick with that.
Motion from Councilman Allwes, second from Councilman Spear, and further discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Period is ordered with item six. Councilman Allwes, discussion for possible action, direct city police chief to conduct the traffic study regarding possible future removal of yield and stop signs at the following locations. Murray Street and First Avenue, Murray Street and Third Avenue, Murray Street and Annan Avenue. And provide the results of that traffic study to the city and the mayor in order for both officials to make recommendations at the city council meeting following completion pursuant to City Code 6-3-2B. Now, this is, you have a mistake. It doesn't matter how long you both here, you've made one or two truckies, which is confusing Murray and Mill Streets. So with that on any motion.
I'd like to bring up the discussion. Let's say we should table a sign at this... It's talking, it says people Murray Street and Mill, especially. They, people Murray Street, they're like, they're one-way street. They can turn over to Mill Street, go up and down, in the way, north or south. But as Mill is Murray Street is, it was in one shape or other where you're not in a one-way street. Instead of a series of stop signs, it's confused.
I think, thanks for your input earlier. I think we just, you're right. We got it. In my opinion, there's a problem with all the signs on that street. Stop goes stop. People are running more than they're stopping at. I think that the one-way street could be dealt with in a way.
Residents on that street say that. And it's just a nuisance. There's no other traffic and I'm driving, I'm not going to stop. That's what they say.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions of those doing this. I was gonna ask BJ, do you know when that street is actually going to be paved? Because I think, one of the things I've noticed, it's not going to be paved. Because...
You know what I'm thinking? It will be paved.
Not in the future.
Okay.
This year.
This year.
Yeah, this year. And so I don't know that going out this week, we can take it, put this traffic down.
Right, because I think, because...
The same thing.
Yeah, I drive that real frequently and it's a little rough. So everything's like really slow. And I think a lot of people avoid that street right now. So if we could do that, that would pay enough, I think, would be a better, accurate figure.
That's why I was shaking my head because it says it's not a traffic study. And you need to study down on that street, period. Call it a movie.
And the residents of that area use it, but I think everybody else avoids it.
We would like to play...
So once it's paid, I think normal traffic flow, once again, with the payback, it might increase how nice the road is.
We have a motion table...
Table that till the road...
Table till the end. You okay with that motion? Okay, we have a motion then from Councilman Flankis. We have a second. Second, I want to counsel William Harper. All in favor of table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. I have seven, Councilman Allwes, discussion for possible action. Approval of higher temporary utility accounts clerk from increased interviewees due to current staffing situation and finance.
So my name's on, Jeanette, you're still on the phone?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
I put this, I requested this. Can you guys hear me okay?
Okay, here you go.
Okay. The reason why I requested this is I, I don't know if we need to use a temporary or not. I feel like we might. I have one employee that has medical issues that I never know when they're going to be here or not. I have another utility clerk slash account clerk hired that she won't be coming for the next two weeks. So I guess I, my thought on this is just to request to have the ability to hire a temporary if we feel like it's needed. My thought is that if we could find somebody that's willing to do temporary, come in, train, work in positions, and possibly be like on-call or... I'm not really sure. I just, I keep getting shorthanded because of medical issues. And of course, the turnover downstairs, which I feel like we're on a good path of getting that taken care of. That it would just be nice to have the ability if the council would agree to hire a temporary if needed.
What is the pleasure of the council on this?
I, I've been in City Hall and there are times when the treasurer's down there working the front desk, you know. We're gonna have vacations come on along with illnesses. I think my personal opinion is we gotta keep the office open. And we can't be taking some of our remanaging staff. They're doing the work, but I think it's a great idea to have a fallback. I think that's a good idea. The only question I have, do these temporary people, they have to be bonded to, don't they?
Well, our bonding comes through our full package.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, yes.
Is there a motion for this item?
I'm making that motion to hire a temporary clerk in between the utility clerk and between the treasurer and the city clerk will determine when that person is brought in.
A motion to add a second. Is that good from Councilman Flankis? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. Item nine, Councilmember City Clerk, discussion for possible action, oh, I'm sorry. Jumped over eight. Councilman Allwes, discussion for possible action, approval of monthly balance sheets for general fund, street fund, and enterprise funds. Do you have a standard to be done? A lot of information.
On these balance sheets, everybody still needs to be aware. The treasurer will still be making adjustments as we move forward into the new year for carryover, carry forth, and auditing corrections. So as you say, right now, I'm pretty intent, happy with them.
I mean, it's real obvious the care that's taken in these and all of the accounts and that the city, it's been a long time since the city's been in a situation as we're in. I'll entertain a motion on this item. So motions from Councilman Allwes, second.
Second.
Second from Councilman Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, Councilmember City Clerk, discussion for possible action, approval of 3% raise to Public Works Supervisor Craig Beth based upon his August 23, 2021 performance evaluation.
I'd just like to mention that the stamp system improvements today are a result of Mike taking the initiative to contact Ford and bringing a technician up here. And we learned a lot today while this technician worked with us. And he's still here. He's on the line in Mike's office. We're loading in to make sure that we're good. I'd also like to note the improvement with Broadband Park after we had that vandalism incident. Mike was very proactive in getting cameras uprightway. And that has definitely made a difference for the activity around the park. I worked late a lot in the summer and I felt more comfortable in the summer coming down late at night. There hasn't been the exciting incidents just trying to park. There were kids sitting back and forth right in the building almost every time I come down last year. And that has gone, it's not a distance. I'd also like to note as far as Broadband Park and other areas of the community preparing for the fourth, I received a call from a prominent member of the community, quote unquote, you know, your public works really work their hearts out to prepare for the fourth and for the Vietnam, Walmart, arrival. And I think that's a result of Mike's example. His crew works like he does. So based upon that and his performance evaluation last Monday, I highly recommend he receive a 3% raise.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions?
I just, Jess, if you're still on the phone, maybe Jennifer can clarify this. This is, seems a little sort of awkward. Can you tell us what the full pack, top dog, Neil said, white, we went this way versus a normal personnel session? So everybody's where I know, you told me, but there, sort of the deer in headlights look like how this is happening.
Yeah, I didn't tell you. Mike is not an appointed physician. He is under, he was hired by the city clerk. And I don't think that was Jennifer at the time, but he is not an appointed physician. So he is not, his performance is to be critiqued by his supervisor, not by public officials. And his evaluation is considered not a public information.
And Mike is the only exempt non-appointed employee in the city, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
So that's why, for example, I have questions, I run my questions or requests through Jennifer, Hannah, the CC, and Mike. And then she bases her devaluations or whatever nearly on the performance of that. Way of taking it now, that's how it works.
I definitely took it.
Yes, they can.
I was just going to add, I definitely took Councilman Allwes' comments into consideration along with my own request.
Okay, and I, and I think it's just sort of strange how it works out this, but I'm told when we're in trouble. But I did ask the last increase in pay, Mr. Mike Craig, couple of fact in 2019. You know, the price of beans and all of other stuff.
That is correct.
So I think, I'll make the motion to grant a 3% raise to Public Works Supervisor.
Motion from Councilman Allwes, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Councilman Flankis. Any further discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. Thank you. Item ten, Councilmember City Clerk, discussion for possible action, approval to hire Nevada Rural Water Association to conduct income surveys in proposed Parker Avenue Sewer and Bell Avenue Pipeline CEDD project areas for approximately $6,600.
So I don't know if BJ wants to get on the hearing beside him too. We discussed prior to contacting Nevada Rural Water. BJ's talked to for the surveys. And so I contacted them on Parker and on the Bell Avenue Pipeline projects. They came back and indicated that they only have one travel cost as far as over and back. And that, you know, there would be positive conduct to survey. And of course, their expenses volunteer. So this is kind of a two-for-one to eliminate two trips.
As this is ordered.
And that's a good provider.
Okay, as these are water sewer projects, the art of funding seems pretty... Pretty clear that it can be used for water sewer projects in addition to COVID things. Could be used, are available for this?
I believe so. Only question I have is 600, the quote is, you know, 32, 69, is that times two?
That's true.
It's, 6,600 is total, isn't it? Approximately 3,300 each.
Or each?
Yeah, I rounded out. I mean, actually...
Okay, that's fine. I just, because they're making two. One trip to do both of them in the same time.
Yes, probably another day.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, these would have to be completed because by now we have an LMI area. And this is to come in and do the survey.
When was the last Bellomine study we've done? Has it been a while?
It has been a while. And I don't necessarily agree with the maps that I'm looking at. I think they got them almost interchanged. You know, some of the areas where I thought about an LMI, they actually have it as outside of LMI. And so I think they did a calculation that they forgot to sort of track them 100.
So the study they'll do is not based on existing maps?
So they'll actually get a demo to come back in and determine it because for kernels, of course, that's a pre-accreted community.
Any questions, fellas?
So I think we're easy to watch.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion from Councilman Spear, do I have a second?
Double digits.
Second from Councilman Allwes. All in favor of the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. Item 11, Councilmember City Treasurer, drafts discussion for possible action. Approve Budget Committee's recommendations of American Rescue Fund expenditures to include, modify, or exclude the following. Premium pay for all current city abiding employees as essential workers during COVID and pandemic in an amount to be determined. Fire EMS compensation for future COVID uncertain use to $1,000. Committee against Child Hunger Cash, appropriate donation to $10,000. Food bank donation to $10,000. And COVID-19 vaccination awareness campaign, $200,000. So I mean, these are items based on the recommendations of council's list that's spoken through.
Right, because I believe, you know, there was 16 we put together. And the budget committee said, this gets something going on this year. So these, in our opinion, were the quickest ones that were no-brainer, you know. Not a lot of study, not a lot of in-depth planning on that. That's why. The most in-depth planning, like I mentioned earlier when Councilman Spear was talking about it, was the premium pay for all current city employees. And that's been run through our auditor, auditing company. And she has a spreadsheet, you know, up, you know, one called 2%, 3%, 4%, I believe, different categories. Along with these other ones, it's just that you gotta remember, this is the first installment of the money to the city. You know, some areas are made, we still got 16, I mean, 16 ideas, or about eight here, whatever it is. So it's still open for discussion, but these are the ones we felt could get the ball rolling right there, so.
On this first item, Jeanette, if you're still on, for my benefit and the benefit of the council, as I recall, there is an amount, like a maximum amount per hour that they allow people to do.
So in, yeah, we can pay a freaking amount of $13 an hour for employees that are considered essential, which all the employees in the city are considered essential workers. Of course, you gotta make sure that it, the way I would say we handle that is you can pay up to the 13, but it's, there's a cap of, I think it was $25,000 per person, few. So that's why I came up with the worksheet. I think I did 3%, 4%, 5%. Yeah, I think that was the ones I did. And then fortunately, I let this print that off. Instead of doing, say, the $13 per hour, which we were allowed, it would be connected to overtime. It would be done by a trap, it's a separate pay code. But it is allowed. I did talk extensively with our auditor. You can't do bonuses, you can't do back pay. And so I was going out beyond that date that Jim had mentioned. So I think our recommendation was for the Budget Committee was to possibly come up with either a dollar amount per person or a percentage. Just do it for a limited time, staying through the fiscal year. Like Jim mentioned, we do have the next round coming in the sun. If we want to continue, we can look at it at that time. But it is allowed in God's out there.
Did you have a recommendation on amount and time period that you'd like to make there?
I, I don't feel comfortable. I wish I had. Jeff, do you have to have that sheet that worksheet that I did?
No, I sure don't.
3%, 4%, 5%. I mean, doing the $13 per hour, if you're looking over $100, so I'm not recommending that. We could choose that all of our funding shouldn't be a few of that. We have approximately 44 full-time employees. Well, not full-time, we do have several part-time. But I would recommend only with a percentage.
I can't stop.
That would be trapped. It would just be...
Can you remember the bottom line? Was it like 57,000 for, I can't remember?
If I remember right, I think that, I want to do... I think the 4% would be, you know, I'm sorry. I weirdly managed to print that off and I'm not seeing that with my paper work here.
But the bottom line is, it's eligible when you can do that. You know, and it's shuffled through the papers. Can you remember the year we go through it? We have a 24?
Yeah.
Yeah, 24, so December 31st, 2024, April 33rd, 2026.
Yeah. Have you mind the word selection? Right, I think. I want to say the, okay. 3%. I'm sorry, I don't even remember.
That's just how long we have to stand.
Yeah. It's not being spent by... Recording is not required to be done, totally done until Plank, Plank 6.
I mean, are we thinking, for example, like, let's say we did 4% from now until the end of the year? Is that something to...
Yeah, I would recommend that we probably should have threw it through the end fiscal year. And then when we get the next amount of the sun, that they want to continue, we can do it.
The end of this fiscal year, so next June? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. It would be the end of June. Correct.
2022.
So if we did a, if we did a lower percentage then for a longer period of time, say we did 2% or 3% until the end of next fiscal year? Is that something we want to have in it? Type the numbers on, we'll get a meeting next week. We will have a meeting next week.
I think that'd be an ideal. That's a good idea.
And I, yeah, because the worksheet that I did, I did it for a fiscal year, which is even more than what we've got over now, because we've already got July and August. So what I did was I just took everybody's base pay, came up with hourly wages or percentages of their hourly wages for a full year. So what my worksheet shows is for 12 months, that we're already down attendance at the end of fiscal year.
Okay, so if we could have, I think the consensus of the council is, we'd like to see that spreadsheet next week for a table then. And then the fire, the fire EMS... Um, and then the fire, the fire EMS, i- is that just a bank account, we're just throwing it in the bank for future need? Is that correct? The fire EMS compensation?
The way, the way I see that is that we could sit, it's just basically saying, we're gonna take that amount and restrict it over in, in a restricted account, I, I call it restricted account, they count, they call it something different, that just, that we're gonna hang on to this two hundred thousand dollars in case there's an issue that comes up because of COVID that we now need to supplement our, um, emergency response people with more wages.
Is that also for if there's equipment that they need to respond to some COVID or pandemic issue or anything like that? Or, or let's assume that, I don't know, for some reason that our, our staff levels drop because they're all quarantined, does, can we use that money to bring in contractors to help cover things or is it?
Contractors or overtime for the ones that can work or, uh, to me, that one that we're doing is, is kind of setting a strike for wages. Um, but it's not to say that we can't use some of that money for the fire department. I think, um, I've sent out to the Budget Committee a request that the fire chief has put in for the, the piece of equipment, I'm not sure whether it is, I think it's.
Yeah, I'm hoping they can hear it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make a clarification on this, you had, the premium pay for all current employees, that includes the fire department. So we're saying fire EMS compensation. So I don't want to be doubled, they'll be back up first off, I make a disclaimer, I've passed a member of the fire department for thirty-six years. Decision I made in amendment, amendment of the city viewing and the fire department was the fault here and that, so I have to worry there. Want to make sure that, with the way this is worded, again, we change the fire EMS compensation for future COVID uncertainties. It's almost, uh, we're gonna pay him a year of, uh, premium pay, then we're gonna turn, have to give him more money for this COVID stuff, I think we need to clarify.
Well, no, what I, yeah, what I'm saying, the way I read this, is that we're just going to reserve that two hundred thousand in case something is due to COVID, it's created, um, more, more money that needs to go out in wages. It wouldn't be part of the premium part, it's part of the regular wages that say, you have several of them out on, you know, this because of COVID and you've got a bunch of them to have, to have overtime to cover these, but should we start pulling from that, if that was the budget for.
I think this might be just making things a little bit more complicated, we have the money in the account already for that need. So I, I don't know that I see the benefit in this.
And then just to.
What would happen if we didn't use the money, do we need to turn it back or?
And just to clarify, we have.
Well, yeah.
We have to have money committed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, it doesn't have to be all spent by that date, it has to be committed.
So if this is just putting it in a reserve, if we don't use it for that, then we have it kind of loose and we use it for something else. In the end, we have to have all this money spent by a certain date, two thousand twenty-four. Um, we're just starting at twenty-one, we're just, this was just a matter of, the way I looked at this was the same, we were gonna commit it, two hundred thousand just in case. But it doesn't mean that it'll happen, it was just as a chunk policy, if it doesn't happen, we kind of lose and use it for something else.
You have a question, do you?
Yes, I, uh, for my clarification, um, and Jim, if, if I'm wrong, please tell me. Were you saying that compensation is different from when we, because you started talking about equipment and other things, so that's sort of like throwing the money in the pot for two different things, not that it's not needed for gold, but should it be stated a different way?
Probably.
I think drop the word compensation.
Just put it in reserve for the fire department for whatever use we need.
For that our department to use. Yeah, because I think they do cause things that they could stand in on for equipment that weren't existing.
And the, the cash program and the food bank, I don't know, do you have any questions on that?
Well, I just wanted to make a couple comments on the cash. I've been running, right now, you know, the ten thousand dollars, that was kind of, I, I think that's just probably the first one you want to deal with it, but the, right now, the cash program is averaging almost seven thousand dollars a month in lunches, that's what it's actually costing net. And they, you know, they expect a decrease of ten thousand dollars when school starts this year because a lot of other issues out there. So if you take that into account, and we have plenty, I, ten thousand dollars is not enough. And it specifically says that you can use child nutrition program, SNAP, whatever SNAP is, as school lunch. I don't think that number's high and I think that number needs to be a lot higher. And a couple of reasons, I just told you, but one of them is, yeah, also the, uh, I can't remember which one I've been talking to, I went to all of them. But, uh, Magic Carpet, there's no place they can have lunch, everybody's having a lunch at the same, so it's, it wasn't growth, so, and they're relying on the cash program. The cash program is unresponded for, I'm concerned on this request, but this, we can come back next month and add ten thousand to it.
Can, can someone from the cash program put in a, because I think we can't with this numbers. Can the cash program tell us how much still is?
Well, actually, what she told me is she needs a hundred and twenty thousand a year.
Okay.
How much are they giving, how much are they bringing in a year that's, uh?
Right now, they get about seven thousand a month, but there's no guarantee on that, that's just donations. So that's thirty-six thousand, what are they here for, can you take a difference?
I, I, you know.
And we're feeding our community, we're feeding our kids, um, because more kids go hungry than you would ever.
Magic.
Yes.
You know, I, uh, uh, I hate to see an action we take, I give them, say, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, then you lose your seven thousand dollar a month donation. People could say, I'm not gonna donate no more, so it's gotta be a difference, you know, to put the hundred, whatever the.
I mean, if we could start with this ten like it suggested and then, I mean, we've got money, we've got time, they can come back and ask for more.
Sure, that's about three months, but I figured of their.
Sure.
Their current, their, their income, yeah, ten thousand in three months, if they're gonna do that.
And then, um, on this last item, COVID vaccination awareness campaign, this number, uh, I came up with because I talked to an ad company on kind of what we'd be doing and like I told them, um, give us a price for everything that could be done. And, and this would still, if, if the council, um, if the council decides to allocate money to this, it still would have to go out for an RFP. There would have to be a competitive review process on this, we couldn't just hand it over to somebody. But I, I really feel that an act campaign, um, is, is really kind of a last arrow in the quiver, I, I think. Mass mandates have limited effect, seems to get people angry, I think vaccination requirements just, uh, serve people's dander up as well. The, the state is kind of falling down on the job as far as, uh, these kind of campaigns, on our trip to Reno and back and going around cars and seeing everything. I saw one small billboard and it was outside of Fallon, I'm sure they're spending most of their money in Clark County, and you saw that one? That was the only one I saw and most people don't even know what the state's doing with those vaccine programs and, um, if the council feels this is too much, I mean, I'll, I'll take whatever we can get and do what we can, but I think more than just, and Councilman always did point out the, the full page that the hospital took. While I think stating facts and stuff is helpful, I think we need a, a better, more persuasive argument being made. You know, we're talking about, if, if you think back to some of the ads and things they did back in World War Two for bonds and war bonds and things like that and, and drives, it was billboards, it was, you know, movie reels, all, all sorts of stuff that they did back then.